Hi, good evening. We're gonna get started with the workshop. We can come back in. Just real quick, as we've gotten in the habit of doing whenever we have a first read on an item that is worthy of a deeper dive, we're holding workshops, which tonight we're gonna do one on the SRO MOUs. Superintendent is gonna lead us to it. Take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do wanna recognize that we have with us a number of people who are resources on this, and so I would expect that as we get into the question and answer that, you know, they will be in a position to come and help us to address any questions that you might have. We have Chief Frank Clark from the Portland Police Department, Resource Officer for Deering High School, Steve Black is also here. Our lead attorney, lead attorney, that makes it sound like you have more than one. Our, what we kinda do. But Bruce Smith is here with us. And then we also have the three high school principals here, so Mr. Pierce, Ms. Jepson, and Dr. Ahmed are all with us because we expect that as we engage in this conversation today that you may have questions that would, okay, good, that they will be able to answer. At your places, you have the latest edition of the memorandum of understanding. It is slightly different from what you saw if you looked at this yesterday, so, but that is what's up online, so it has been replaced. What you have at your table is also online, so if you are looking at the online version, you have the latest version of it. So, you know, you don't necessarily have to have the paper one, but I just wanted to let you know that it is different from the one that you reviewed. And it's a minor change, but we will deal with that in a couple of minutes. So, what we were hoping to do today is to help to build the board's understanding of the resource, of the school resource officer program in general, particularly because several of you were not on the board when this, when the memorandum of understanding was originally entered into, which was in 2015. So, we thought it would be helpful to do that. And because we have some significant revisions, we are now, this memorandum, as you've probably read, is, you know, it renews every year unless somebody discontinues it for some reason with proper notice, but, so we've not really renewed it or done anything because there haven't been any changes to it since it was implemented in 2015. So, we are now making significant changes, and that's why we're here today. So, a little bit of background on the SROs in the district. As I mentioned, Steve Black is here with us. He's the DHS Resource Officer. And we also have a Resource Officer, Mike Bennis, at Portland High School, who's not with us tonight, but is also, he's the other SRO. They are sworn officers in the Portland Police Department, and they are assigned and supervised by the Police Department. So, we don't actually, you know, assign them, and we don't have the supervision responsibility for them. We pay a fixed amount to the Portland Police Department for each officer, and so that was $130,000 in the last budget year. Some of you may recall that we reviewed that at the time that we were working on the budget last year. And that's for both officers, so the 130 is for the two. We, and, you know, I think our administrators are here to sort of, to signal their strong support for the role of the SRO. We often, you know, think of the SRO as a police officer, but I think from our perspective, they play an integral role in the school that goes beyond that of the police officer. Obviously, they are police officers, and as such, they give us access to information and a network of information that we otherwise might not have access to. But in addition to that, they function as a part of our administrative team. They work very closely with our principals, assistant principals, with our counselors, with our social workers to understand what's happening in the school and help us to think through issues at the, at the school around, you know, individual students and around situations. And, you know, in truth, and I think the administrators would, would support this, many of them are somebody that kids will respond to that, you know, might otherwise not respond in the same way to a, to an administrator, to a social worker, or somebody, you know, just some, you know, everybody has different levels of comfort with who they'll be comfortable with sharing information, and sometimes SROs just give us a different, you know, perspective that kids access. Obviously, all of our other schools are also served by the Portland Police Department. The Portland Police Department is our designated police body in our policies, and they, they also assign a community police liaison that works particularly with our elementary schools as a, you know, frequent presence, you know, going into schools and getting to meet the staff and the first point of contact whenever schools have questions about the Police Department. And as I mentioned earlier, the memo of understanding that we're in the process of renewing and revising was first entered in 2015. So, what we're proposing is to renew the existing agreement with a couple of changes. And so, the changes are, one, that it allows the SRO to assist our school teams with threat assessments and the threat assessment process. We separately have a memorandum of understanding that we entered into with the Police Department and several other schools in Portland around, you know, a joint threat assessment process that we can activate, we've never had to, but can activate when we have situations that cross over schools. So, this formalizes it in the, in this MOU. And it also, and this is the primary purpose of today, lays out the groundwork for implementation of the body worn camera ordinance that the city passed back in 2018, in the winter of 2018. So, I'm gonna go into a little bit of detail. These are the specific revisions to the MOU. The cooperation around threats, it ensures that any information that's necessary to make sure that we are safe in an emergency and that is information that either one of us has, will be shared in a timely manner for the purposes of a threat assessment, and that the SROs can sit on our threat assessment team when it makes sense to do that, to assess any school-related, school-based or school-related threats. And then the primary purpose of our conversation today, which is the implementation of the body worn cameras, around the use, there's two specific pieces to this. One is that they will be activated only in situations where the officer is responding to suspected criminal activity or helping school personnel with disorderly or disruptive behavior, or, you know, obviously, anything that is consistent with, with policy, with Portland Police Department policy or law, and that the SRO will inform the person that they're being recorded as soon as it's practical and safe to do that. And then the other one is that the, the cameras will not be activated in spaces, private spaces such as locker rooms or restrooms, or that during an administrative meeting. So, any, just sort of standard conversation that's happening between staff and a student that a SRO might be participating in, they won't be consistently on at all times, and they won't use those in those situations because as the first bullet points out, they will only use it in situations where it may, where they're actually investigating criminal activity or, you know, some kind of disruption, a serious disruption in the school. And then the privacy issues around the use of the recordings, what happens once a recording is made? And so, there are a number of provisions around that, and this is, you know, so they're laid out there. They won't be, we won't have access to them for routine, you know, it won't be something that is sort of downloaded and has, we have access to for, just for, you know, seeing what Officer Black did yesterday, or something along those lines. So, the only way that school personnel can, can get access to the recordings is if a request is made through my office. So, it's, that's to prevent just the sort of random, oh, let me look at the footage situation. So, it has to go through the superintendent's office and, you know, be requested from my office to, to the Portland Police Department to get access to it. And, you know, that there are conditions under that, so it will be made available if it may be useful in promoting safety of students or staff in the school. And then it goes on to clarify that any parent of a minor who's been subject of a recording can request and schedule a time to view that recording. So, it is something that will always be accessible to them through the Portland Police Department. And then this is where I think it probably needs to spend a little bit of time. So, they will not be released, those, those recordings will not be released by the, by the Police Department unless they're deemed to be public information under existing laws. So, that would be under things like Freedom of Access laws, and there are other laws that I am not as familiar with that would, that would play into that. So, that's the first part of that. And then that once a recording is, is given to us, so once the school district is in possession of that recording, it will not be released further without those conditions being met, either parental consent, so the parent says, like, yes, you can, you know, share that with, you know, fill in the blank, or subpoena, search warrant, or a court order. And then, you know, as an additional condition, that the Portland Police Department reserves the right to decide if the, if the, so they ultimately have the right to decide whether this is released to any party of the MOU, or to a student's parent, a guardian, or legal representative. So, that's the essence of it. What we're looking for today is, well, actually, before that, I do wanna point out that I had a conversation, and Michael is here, I had a conversation with Michael Cabetti, Cabetti, from the American Civil Liberties Union last week, and we've tried to incorporate some, some of the changes that I just went through, our, our attempt to address some of the concerns, and I'm not gonna say that they're addressed, and so I'm sure that Michael will let you know what concerns remain from, from his perspective, from the ACLU's perspective. And so, this is also an opportunity to hear from staff and ask any questions that you may have because as you know, so we're gonna look for your input tonight and then get formal public input at the meeting on the 12th of November, as well as ask you to vote. I do wanna, sort of, you know, I wanna ask that as we have this conversation today, and I probably should've said this at the beginning, that we try to keep it conceptual instead of trying to wordsmith. As, you know, as I said, you have a different version of this today because, you know, we've been going back and forth and trying to make these changes. And so, if you looked at what was on there last Thursday when the board packet went out, this is like three or four iterations later. So, there have been, so, you know, if we can, you know, try to focus conceptually on what are the questions that you have, the concerns that you might have, then we will, you know, with the, with our attorney, with the Portland Police Department's attorney, with staff, work to make sure that we, that we reflect that in the revisions that we bring to you at the, for the next meeting.
Thank you, Superintendent. So, I suppose if we have any questions, we can get started with that. So, if anybody wants to jump in, go for it. Anyone? Ms. Moriarty, please. Mics are on, by the way.
Thank you, Superintendent. Can you just go over one more time about the why? Why, I mean, I understand the why of updating the MOU, but can you go over again the specifics around why the body cameras?
I think I would ask Chief Clark to join me to, to help with this. I, you know, as I said, this is an ordinance that was passed by the city in February, I believe, of 2018. At the time, you know, chief, the chief at that time contacted me and said that we will eventually be at this place. So, I think we are now at the place. This is the last set of officers that are, that are not, they're equipped, but they're not actually activating their cameras when they're on site pending this conversation and this revision. And so, you know, I think that's the, sort of, the nitty gritty why, but I think in terms of why body cams, I think that, Chief?
Sure. Yeah, actually, I appreciate the opportunity to, to be here tonight. I have less time, as I indicated on, with the City of Portland than you do on the Board of Education. I've been here seven weeks and two days as of today, and I keep coming back every day. So, it's, it's been good so far. But I also, I was 30 years with the City of South Portland, with the Police Department there before coming here to the city. And if I could just take a couple of minutes maybe to give you a little background, which I think might, might answer your question, hopefully at the same time. But, again, I've been here for a couple of months. The Superintendent and I met very early in that time to kind of talk about some of the key priorities, which I think we both have, which involve school safety, the SRO program in general, and the status of our, of our body worn camera program in the department, which we felt was important to incorporate in the MOU so that we could have a public discussion about the whys and about why we, you know, went that route as an agency. So, back in April of last year, the Police Department started a, did a pilot program. So, there was a decision made to evaluate the technology, to see what the benefits were, starting back in 2015. There was a lot of indications nationally in terms of the benefits that implementing body cameras had in police departments and communities in terms of providing some transparency, opening up trust, and providing a mechanism to, to conduct reviews or to really objectively document and look at potential interactions between our, between police and the community members. So, eight to 10 officers participated in the pilot program. Based on that, there was a policy that was implemented in the department. It was based on the feedback from, you know, industry models, feedback from the folks that participated in the program itself, other stakeholders in the community. And essentially, it outlines when an officer is to wear and activate the device, when they're authorized to turn them off, as well as a handling, retention, and release of their recordings, which I know is, is an important topic here in this particular forum. So, the goal is to balance the interest, the interests with those of the public, the school, and the students in terms of privacy and providing that, that transparency. Unlike other agencies, Portland PD actually specifically carved out certain circumstances in the policy that relates to such areas as their use in schools, healthcare facilities, and during First Amendment type of activities. In the public purview, officers are substantially expected to activate the cameras at the initiation of any potential law enforcement encounter. Investigative stops, detentions, detentions, traffic stops, potential scenarios where they're gonna conduct a search, make an arrest, use force, those are all areas where on the street, officers are expected to have their body cameras operating, so those interactions are captured. In the school environment, officers are already expected to turn on the, the cameras in a more finite set of circumstances like the Superintendent made reference to. So, if there's criminal activity, potential crime that they're investigating, or disruptive behavior that may potentially escalate. Recordings would generally be prohibited in places where are higher expectations of privacy, such as locker rooms, restrooms, offices, while conducting safety sensitive activities like domestic violence, safety planning, and those other things of those nature, of that nature. Officers will not be recording as a matter of course throughout the day, such as in school hallways, and classrooms, and locker rooms. They would only be, again, operating or activating the camera in specific instances. For about two months now, all patrol officers have been deploying with body cameras daily, meaning all officers that are responding to the calls for service in the city's schools now are using these cameras, their cameras that they're deploying with in compliance with the existing policy and the standards and the criteria that we're talking about here tonight. The last members of the department to go through this are our school resource officers, our two school resource, resource officers. The mere ability to provide a mechanism for a more complete and objective documentation of an incident, you know, beyond that, that may be captured in iPhone video from other people that are, that are there or witnessing the same event, will only tend to benefit the involved students and staff and all the police officers that are involved. Such use may not only ensure accountability for criminal or disorderly behavior, but may also act as a means to review any incidents where our actions, or the actions of others are called into question. I'm proud of the work that our police officers do. I've found Portland PD to be very professional, to be a very competent, have a very competent skill set and employees, and I also appreciate the partnership that we have with the school. I oversaw the SRO program in South Portland for years. We implemented the program there. I know one of the keys there was communicating with the public. We sent a letter home from, because it's a Police Department policy, we sent a letter home explaining a little bit more broadly to, we actually sent it out through the school district to all the parents in the community, just explaining, this is what the program is, this is what it isn't potentially, and this is why we're doing it and why we think it's important. So, and I'm, I'll be here for whatever you need for any questions, but thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Do we have any board questions? Ms. Moriarty, that was your, you prompted that explanation, that, was that what you were looking for?
Yeah, it was. It was very much so. Do we also wanna talk, I mean, should I say any comments, or we're just doing questions right now?
So, I think let's stick to questions, clarifying questions. Mr. Balfour's hand is, his hand raised, so if you don't have, if you wanna carry on, then we'll...
No, I don't have any other questions right now, but yeah, have comments later.
Mr. Balfour's.
Thank you. This question is probably better for the police chief. Just curious about the body camera. Does it indicate when, is there like a red blinking light once it's turned on that someone can tell that it's on?
There is, you can do it. There's a, there's a covert mode and a non-covert mode, and so it actually, I think it's actually green if it's on. Correct me if I'm wrong. It's, when it goes on, it has a light, you have it in the right mode. It's, it's green or red, but the show interference is, yes, I can do that and show that.
Turn it on and see what happens?
Sure. So, that may be in covert mode too, because there's some way to, is the light going on on that, the front of it?
I'm gonna put my old bag on.
The show interference is, yes, I know it does have that capability.
It is recording right now when there's no lights on.
Okay. So, it's in covert mode, yeah.
The charger does have a red light, a red light when it's safe. Yeah.
As far as the video, once it's recorded, it's, the, the data, the video is stored at PD server?
Server on the PD, yes. Yeah, and the only ones, the only people that have access to it, like Steve, if he did a, if he was doing a report, could access that video once it's actually, what happens is it's stored locally on the, on the card or whatever that's on the device itself. It puts in, it's put into a download tray at the end of the shift, uploads all the data for just the recordings that were created, and then that's accessible. And again, it's only accessible to sworn personnel that are in the department. And then from that point, and I'm sure we'll get into it, we could talk about the release because there are processes that the department has in place in terms of who can or can't access that from outside the department as well.
Gotcha. Okay. So, at no point is it, well, once it's recorded from the body camera, taken back to the PD server, it's, from that point, it's not anywhere on the, the school servers? Is that right?
Correct. That's correct.
Right. That's all I, for now.
Thank you, Mr. Balfour. Any other questions? Let's go, Mr. Norris, and then Ms. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to clarify the, just the request stream for kind of acquiring these recordings. So, say, school personnel wanted to view one of these recordings, they go through the superintendent, but that, I think it was bullet six, the Portland Police Department preserves the right to decide if the footage can be legally released to any party. So, just because a request is made to the superintendent's office and the superintendent agrees with the request, it doesn't necessarily mean that the footage is released to the office, to the school department and/or the school administration.
Yeah, that, that's correct. The, a couple of the other laws that come into play, the Freedom of Access Act, LAAR is one that would be looked at to determine whether or not the video itself, or likewise, any, any associated investigative or arrest reports potentially that might be associated with that same case, whether those are public information or not. That determination is made by our police attorney. So, it would be, if the request came in, I would refer that to the police attorney. The police attorney would look at that, would literally look at the video itself and the contents of it and determine whether or not it was public information based on the FOA statute. And there's also, there's a Criminal History Records Information Act that would apply and determine if it was public information. I would venture a guess, if the, and we've had conversations obviously about this over the last few weeks as we were working through this, there will be more, there will be less recordings that we will be able to release than those than we, less than, that we will be able to release than not, only because of the different, because of the fact that there are juveniles involved and there are, there are a lot more privacy constraints if we're releasing it outside of the criminal justice system, with the juvenile justice system.
And, and not, obviously not like the public eye or the parents, but the school department also is not part of that sphere, right?
As far as that release goes, they would be, they would be considered, yeah, there's no, currently, other than if there's an incident that, and it's specifically exempted in statute that deals with school safety, wellness, health, you know, there's some certain provisions that maybe Bruce could get into more, but, but there are certain exemptions that, yes, we would share that, we would share the reports, and that is part of that process that's also covered in there in terms of making sure that there's any threats or any safety or emergency situations are, that we all have the information that we need in order to do our job and ensure the safety of the school. Other than that, you know, particular incidents would be less likely to be released to anyone outside of the Police Department or criminal justice system, including the school.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Norris. Ms. Davis?
You've outlined two, essentially, two times when the cameras might be activated. One is responding to cases of suspected criminal activity, and then the second is one assisting school personnel with matters that may result in disorderly or otherwise disruptive behavior. Can you give us some actual examples of what might fall into those two categories? And, you know, in a school, I mean, I'm sure you have them sort of on the street, but what, what might that look like in a school that would? I mean, I realize you haven't done it yet, but you've got to have thought ahead about what, what would trigger it.
I'm Steve Black, and I've been a school resource over in Portland for like 13 years. Basically, if we're responding to a fight, I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to turn it on because it's criminal activity. If there's a disturbance in the cafeteria, we don't know what disturbance is. If it's two people arguing, it's an argument, might be a little disorderly, but does it really meet criminal activity in a school? There's a lot of this. We go to meetings, and my question is, like, we search a lot of kids, the principals do, and I'm there for safety and everything. I'm not gonna be able to turn it on until it turns criminal. Most of the time when they search a kid, they're not really finding anything, and we're just mentor sessions. There's gonna be a lot of, some, some questions, but for me, it's pretty cut and dry. It's gonna be fights or something massively disorderly. Once if we, you know, pull out a bunch, you know, a bunch of marijuana or something out of someone's bag, then, oh, it's, it's a crime, so you have to turn it on. I mean, it's, it's not gonna get turned on a lot.
Does the department do bias training that would, because I can see, especially when these sort of may, may lead to that, that one could have a situation where implicit bias might possibly be operating, and I was just curious whether the department had implicit bias training and, and ways that would sort of help you to, to think about it from...
It's more about, it's more about the activity, the criminal part. I don't really care what color someone's skin is, it's just about what's gonna happen. And I know the kids, and I know who's, you know, how some kids are gonna react. If I, the other day, we had to do something outside with some people that I knew, I turned it on and went out and dealt with those people. it on and went out and dealt with those people. Luckily, it went well, but I knew that that could definitely possibly not go well. So, a lot of it has to do with my personal knowledge of the people I'm dealing with. And most of the time, the kids love me, I love them, we get along fine. When I show up, we calm them down, and it's all good, so.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Victor?
I had a question for the chief, and I'm wondering, in your experience in South Portland, if you know whether the SROs in South, the South Portland schools were paid by the city or by the school district?
Eighty-five percent by the school district, fifteen percent by the city.
And then for the superintendent, at what point did the school start to pay for the SROs?
I don't know that for a fact. They've paid, we've paid for it since I've been here, and it started two years before I came, so unless it changed in those two years, and there would probably be board members that would have better, you know, access to that information, my understanding is that this is the way it's been.
Axles, and then I have a couple of things I want to ask.
It's for chief. I have a question. It's about bullet number four. You say the parent can request the time to view, like, a recording of a student, like, of a minor, so I want to know, is just the parent who go to see and schedule the time or he need, like, authorization of superintendent?
No, if the request came from, we do that now. If somebody comes in and indicates that they had some interaction that they didn't feel was the best interaction with an officer on the street, they can come in and review that. They make the request through the police department, usually through the shift commander, they can come in and actually review that currently. So, that wouldn't, it wouldn't have to go through the school and then to the PD if that's what you're asking.
Okay, so, to clarify, they cannot give an example, like, in which case the parent can just request to view, like...
If somebody, like, somebody in the school?
Yeah.
If, you know, if there was some interaction, if the interaction that Officer Black just made reference to last week resulted in somebody getting summoned or arrested or something, which, which actually I do want to point out, I looked at the stats for the last school year, and there were zero students arrested by Portland police officers at any of the schools last year, which I thought was a really interesting statistic anyway, and I think it speaks well to the, to the program. But, but yeah, if they come in, if that had gone in a way that the person felt like they shouldn't have been summoned or shouldn't have been arrested, whatever the circumstance may be, they could come in with their parents, if they were a minor, and sit down and look at the video, again, objectively, here's an objective picture of what the officer saw when, when he showed up, and it may provide some information or a perspective that may benefit, you know, that conversation.
But even if it doesn't result in a summons, if there's just an interaction that they're recorded, would they still have access to that, to that footage?
The recording, if it involves just them, yes, yes.
Ms. Bondo?
Hey, just a clarification question. On the, on those recording, how long we can save those recording on the, on the file? How long they, they have to stay, a couple of years or just a year?
No, great question. They, in our current policy, it is, it's 210 days, so it's a little over six months. That number's based on the Notice of Claim statute, how long somebody can, how long somebody has before they have to notify the department if they were gonna file a lawsuit, for instance. That, that number is going up from 180 days to 365 days. We're actually gonna be increasing the time that we're retaining our video and other evidence related to particular cases to something, probably about 30, almost 395 days is likely where we're gonna end up on that. And then after that, it automatically gets overwritten.
Just have a question about the view of the students. I think, are they feeling, because when they see the officer in the, in the hall, in the school, they feel secure, that means more safe. Now, we adding the, the body camera, so what kind of relationship then we feel like on the psychology mindset, the student will, will acting? Are we feeling like we bringing more, more up, like I want to say is that we building that relationship better, or we are just bringing little more, less of freedom, or just having the students stay away from the relationship with the...
Right.
The police officer?
Yeah, as Officer Black just indicated, he, our priority, their priority in the schools is forming those relationships with the kids, is forming that, having that trust, having those, those contacts and being able to communicate openly with them. We actually asked and received some of the same questions across the bridge when we were looking to deploy the cameras just in the community. I mean, a lot of the feedback and even the concern of the officers was, if I'm wearing a camera in somebody's house, they're not gonna talk open, you know, if they're a victim of a crime, they're not gonna talk open to me, openly with me. And that didn't turn out to be the case, and actually, one of the provisions in the policy that helps to address that concern is the fact that if somebody's coming in and they're, even if they're investigating a criminal matter, but if the, if the officers are talking to a victim of a crime, the victim, I mean, they can turn the camera off, is, is, is built into the policy, you know?
Thank you.
Ms. Thompson?
So, I just wanted to ask you, I guess both of you, in our student handbook, we have cell phones for academic purposes, but I was reading articles that a lot of school districts liken this to just two more cameras amongst thousands that are already in the school through smartphones. And so, currently, I think we've seen across the country, we have recordings at any given moment that students are recording things, and I'm just curious as to any kind of liken do you have to that to research, or maybe even our attorney might know, because all of the students, for the most part, are equipped with smartphones, and they have solved a lot of issues within schools and also helped. So, I'm just curious as to the correlation, and it's, the articles I've read have said, you know, this is just two more cameras amongst thousands, so.
I mean, I think that's, that's right. I think, you know, not only do kids have their own cameras, staff have their own cameras, but we also have cameras in schools, so kids, you know, they're, they're, this is another perspective for specific situations where a police officer has a direct encounter with a student, but, you know, at the same time that they're recording the student, it's, you know, quite likely that somebody might be, you know, somewhere in the vicinity recording the interaction from a different perspective.
Yeah, and I'll only add to that. I know some of the, we've obviously seen some of the video snippets across the country of police interactions with members of the, members of the public, and oftentimes, it is only that, a snippet and a few seconds, and I don't think how those are portrayed sometimes necessarily help law enforcement, and I don't think they tell the whole story. And I'm not saying that body cameras are a panacea either, that they're not gonna necessarily tell the whole story, they're gonna provide a perspective at a moment in time that may be blocked at times by the officer's arms, it may be, it may be knocked off during a confrontation, which has happened fairly frequently, but I would rather be in a, I would rather be asked the question, why are you guys, or why did you guys record that particular incident, than what I think is the more likely question, why didn't you guys record that particular incident? So, that's kind of another thought.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Balfins?
This question is more for the superintendent, maybe even more for the ACLU. I'd like to know what the ACLU's concerns were?
So, I will, since, Michael, since you're here, if that's okay with the board, I'll let Michael speak for himself.
Please, yeah.
I think I could relate them, but I think he'll do a much better job.
Great, I appreciate it. My name is Mike Cabetta. I am policy counsel at the ACLU of Maine. Thank you, Superintendent Botana, for being proactive about reaching out to us and asking for our feedback. We had a long-ranging conversation, and I'll try and boil it down as simply as possible to three points. The first is a concern that arises from the most important federal law protecting student privacy rights, and that's FERPA, or the Family Educational Rights to Privacy Act. This is probably this lawyer's bread and butter. It also happens to be our bread and butter. It is concerned about protecting the rights that students and their parents have in information that shows the student's face, that has any recognizable indication of a student. And what FERPA does is, it gives power to students and parents about what to do with that data and who that data gets disclosed to. Our concern about body cameras on police or on SROs is that the data automatically goes to a police server, and the data is seen by people in a police department without the consent of the student, without the consent of the student's parents. And so, what this very well-meaning new part of the MOU would open the door for is an erosion of students' right to privacy. Our second concern is that there are more effective ways of making school resource officers responsible. That concern arises from an observation that you all have heard about already, which is that school resource officers are less like the police we see on the streets and more like school counselors or guidance counselors or social workers. Our concern arises out of something very similar to what Board Member Bondo earlier put her finger on, which is what happens to the psychology of the student and of the student body when they see a camera on the body of a person who they're expected to trust, expected to confide in? What, at least one study I'm aware of has found is that trust is eroded and is replaced with distance and suspicion. We believe that the school context is very different from streets and sidewalks. Body cams make a lot of sense on streets, sidewalks, and communities. They make less sense in schools because the people we're talking about are actually performing educational functions. They're not primarily performing policing functions, and to perform educational functions takes a great deal of training, but it also takes a great deal of trust. Our third concern arose from the Fourth Amendment. The Fourth Amendment gives us a reasonable expectation of privacy depending on where we are. You have the highest level of privacy in your home, you have the lowest level of privacy in a public park. A school is somewhere in between. As Superintendent Botana said, there are already cameras in schools, but those cameras are generally in the corner of a room. They generally don't pick up audio. Well, what body cams on SROs would do is they would pick up a lot more intimate footage, and they would pick up audio, and they would essentially start a new chapter in the erosion of the reasonable expectation of privacy that students have that arises from the Fourth Amendment to the U.S. Constitution. We have a host of other smaller concerns, but these are some major ones.
Thank you, Michael.
Absolutely.
Do we have any other questions from the board or any more discussion? Ms. Thompson?
I guess for the chief and Officer Black, what would you say, the interactions, I know that your interactions were with students, but I clearly remember Officer Black, and thank goodness you were there, at Portland High School, to mitigate a situation of a gentleman loading a shotgun in the freshman alley, so thank you, all those years ago.
At that point, I probably wouldn't have taken the time to hit the button.
No, you moved on that one, so thank you, all these years later. But the interactions with students, and you alluded to the interactions with the public as well, what would you say percentages, you're in the schools, you're interacting, but then you talked about going outside and talking to people, so you have a lot of interactions as well in that way, what would you say that's been like?
Are you meaning...
Because there's a lot of people that...
I think much of your time is with, like, parents or...
Interactions with the community at law, yeah. Outside the school, mitigating things or...
I mean, most of my contact is with kids day in and day out, but we do have, like, reentry meetings, or if a kid's suspended and we have to summons a student, parents need to come in and get the paperwork and sign. So, what kind of, also together, it probably falls together with, you know, how many summons is written, or, I mean, it depends. I'm not at all the reentry meetings and all this other stuff, but sometimes I'm requested to be there.
But don't you, don't you have a lot of interactions as well with, trying to think of the actual position? All I can think of is Mr. Coyne and the position that he holds, and I know that the SROs work with the youth.
Oh, the JCCOs?
Yes, thank you. I couldn't think of the title.
Juvenile corrections, oh, yeah, I talk with them all the time.
Okay.
But that's nothing that would be recorded.
Okay.
You know, that's...
So, that's, that's reintegration and helping?
Yeah, that's just mentoring or something like that.
Right, okay. So, you're not recording during those incidents?
I would, I would have to, I guess, record if they requested a transport.
Mm-hmm.
It's not really criminal activity, but it's a police action, well, you're, I'm gonna handcuff, I'm gonna handcuff somewhere and, and put them in a cruiser, that should be recorded.
Right.
If, but, that's, if the Juvenile Corrections Office requests that someone's detained, and that means they want them taken to Long Creek.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Ms. Victor?
Also for the chief, I'm wondering if facial recognition technology is either being used by the camera itself or by the police computer system, once it's uploaded, once the video is downloaded into the police department's system?
We don't have facial recognition technology theoretically. I would presume that that would be, if, if we had that. That is actually a topic that's being discussed at the broader council and city level now.
I have a couple of questions. So, I guess, Michael, I wanna, I wanna take, get your take on something. Your first concern of jeopardizing the right to privacy, and specifically with the face recognition technology that's available today, would you say that part of that concern, and towards the end of your comments, you said that there were some other issues that were also mentioned, but not, probably not something that you wanted to get into, but I was wondering if part of that initial concern, and we talked in the, we see language housed through subpoenas, some of these videos could be obtained by agencies. Specifically, I'm concerned about some federal agencies that could eventually subpoena this video, and more specifically, we know that in Portland, we have a new ICE office that's been established. So, does the ACLU hold any concerns for what threat that could potentially form?
That's definitely one of our concerns. It would probably be easier for an agency to obtain footage from another law enforcement agency than it would be from a school, which has a bigger, maybe stronger bureaucracy. I think ICE is the agency that you're referring to.
Yes.
FERPA doesn't protect students or their parents from subpoenas, but ICE would have to go through the judicial process to obtain footage, but that's absolutely a concern.
So, then, I wanna then link that to the comment that you made before when we discussed the perception of students when cameras are introduced into that environment. And again, as we build an environment that could potentially be perceived as dreadful or a threat to some families, would you mind just maybe filling in the gaps that I may be leaving out in my comments?
Absolutely. I'd like to start by reiterating the big difference between what goes on in the streets and what goes on in schools. There is, as the chief rightly said, a lot of data for how body cams improve trust between police in the streets and people in the streets. There's just endless amounts of data, and that's almost conclusively established. There's less data for whether that happens in schools between SROs and students, and that's exactly because in schools, SROs perform a totally different function. What we worry about is the very presence of a body cam, even though the SRO might not want to perform a police function. We'll nudge the SRO in that direction, or we'll make the SRO complicit in a larger system that operates on a different, more policing logic. And as you pointed out, the larger law enforcement system, the national one, doesn't always have educational interests at heart, sometimes has more nefarious or totally different interests at heart that this school board wouldn't endorse, and the very presence of a body cam on an SRO might push the role of SROs, the function of SROs, more in the policing direction and less in the school counseling direction.
Thank you. I am, Jesus. So, I wanted to talk a little bit about some of the information that we have in the handout and then sort of kind of reflect it or compare it to the MOU. So, on the, on the slide where we have the background of the SROs and... So, on the, on the slide where we have the background of the SROs and specifically where we talk about the role of SROs, we see SROs serve as admin team members. They also reach students who may not respond to admin and social workers, and they provide a link to Police Information Network. But when I read the MOU, particularly on the responsibilities section, I don't necessarily see that as part of the language. And I, and I don't doubt that these are valuable roles that the SROs play in our schools, but, but that is not necessarily clearly stated in the MOU. So, I want us to understand that what we have here to govern the, the SRO's role is perhaps, at least to my perception, different than what we're actually seeing them implemented as in our schools. And so, I guess my question would be, while recognizing that they serve a valuable role in, under these descriptions, are they, is a police officer necessarily the best person to fill those roles? Is a, is a uniform officer, and, and I feel like it's necessary for me to add this to it, is a uniform officer carrying a weapon, a gun, in a, in a school environment necessarily the best person to fill those roles? I, as, and I, and I wanna say that I've had conversations with many of our students who have great relationships with our SROs, and I know that our staff are really supportive of it, and, and I don't mean to, in any of my questions, imply that they're not valuable. But I do want us to question whether or not that is the intent of these, the school board and this district to have, you know, uniform officers perform these roles. And if that's the case, and if that's what the community wants, then I think we need to be made aware of that. So, I guess Superintendent, I, I have a sense, I, I know the explanation of this, but would you say that an armed police officer is the first person to serve as an admin team leader?
I think the, the armed police officer is the only person that can serve those three functions all wrapped into one.
So, clearly, I'm not, I don't have the experience that you have, Superintendent, in, in the education environment, but I, I feel the need to, to question whether that's accurate or not, because my instinct is that we're asking police officers to add additional training to what their career training is so that they can fit these roles. So, by definition, this is not the roles that they're intended to, to fill in their professions, and that we are adapting their training so that they can meet these needs. And I, and I fear that we are doing that because, because we have them and not because we've explored other options to do it. So, we've retrofitted their role to, to meet a need that was pre-existing before the SROs were present. I will, I'm sorry, Ms. Figlo, I see you're answering a question, or asking a question. Let me, let me kind of go somewhere else.
Can I ask a question on this?
Yeah, Ms. Figlo, go ahead.
Just, just to follow up to the Superintendent, do, do we have enough in, in each of the two high schools, do we have enough social workers and school counselors to meet our students' needs?
I, I would argue that, you know, clearly, and I mean, you guys know this, that I've advocated for increasing our social work investment, you know, every year that I've been here, and I, you know, would continue to do that. I would caution if the, you know, and I'm, yeah, I don't want to get too far ahead of myself. So, no, we absolutely don't.
Thank you.
So, another kind of big concern that I have is that the language of the MOU very much paints a picture as we describe the role of the SROs as, as pretty much having to do with criminal activity, investigations, you know, when we talk about the camera. And then I hear the description of if they're doing a search of a student's backpack that the SRO is present in the room.
Not always, but sometimes.
But could be, and apparently has been. Again, while I can potentially recognize the value of that, I have to question the aesthetics of it and the environment that, that we're putting a child, where we're putting, again, a uniform individual with a gun as we're searching his backpack when, as reported, most of the time doesn't turn out to be much. So, it seems like an environment that's highly stressful. I know, I, I know that I probably bring some anxiety into any interaction with police officers, and I could assume that some of our students will probably bring those same levels of anxiety, particularly in that picture that we just painted. So, I, I think I have some concerns about that. I, my next comment, I've, I've been really in my mind figuring out the right way to say it, so I'm gonna say it and hopefully not come out like a total, you know, bad person. And I, and I, and I want to say this to add some constructive feedback. But Officer, when Ms. Davis asked about the training that we receive in regards to implicit bias and cultural competency, you made a comment that sort of kind of stood out to me. And I'm, and again, I'm saying this for us to add some perspective and to think about things a little bit differently. You said, "I don't care of the person's skin color." I would argue that the training that I've been part of, and as I discuss implicit bias, I, I hope all police officers are very much aware of the skin color of the individuals that they're interacting with, and that we recognize that there are a lot of pre-existing conditions that are probably outside of your control as a police officer. And again, I do believe that Portland Police Department is, is a really good police department, and they're cautious about how they interact with the public. But I do want us to be aware that when we deal with students of color, that when we deal with students that come from low socioeconomic backgrounds, students that have dealt with generational poverty, that they don't necessarily have a pleasant picture of law enforcement, and that we do need to be aware of that, and, and that, that I believe should be part of all the training that we receive when we're discussing implicit biases. I have some other questions too, but I see some hands, and I know I've already talked enough. Absolutely, please do.
I meant for, like, pressing the button for criminal activity.
Yeah.
That's, I mean, it's criminal activity for pressing the button.
Absolutely. Thank you for clearing that up. Ms. Bondo?
Yes. Thing is for Mike, just want to, to go get some of your comment to see. I heard what you just mentioned about, because I follow a lot of studies about the DMC with the disproportionate minority contact, and especially for the, what's going on to the, to the school. And I think USM has really published a good study around, on 2015, and I was part of some of those studies. So, I just wonder about what's with the body recording system now with having those officers in the school. Are you having the sense then it's gonna increase the, the DMC a little closer, or is going to? Because my fear, then, my concern, not really my fear, just my concern is just about, ah, the, the JCCO officer in already acting around the different bias with the race, then we need to speak about it. So, the, the reason then having those kind of body camera, if it's for the criminal activity, I'm totally agree with that. But just about the sense about increasing those kind of disproportionate minority contact about a misperception of the judgment, then some of those reaction about a specific target student may be one of the reasons that we may see some of them ending mostly on the juvenile system than before. What was your thought about that?
So, DMC is disproportionate minority contact, so law enforcement having more contact with minorities than not is a problem that pervades police practice on the streets and SRO practice in schools across the country. There is no evidence to show that the presence of a body camera has any positive or negative effect on DMC. I urge you all to read the Cutler Institute's report published this year, I'm sure you all have, on SROs. One of the findings was that 17% of SROs in Maine, when school is not in session, return to regular community policing. And so, while SROs are generally beloved and perform school functions, they also shuttle back and forth between regular policing, 17% of them at least, according to the Cutler Institute. 17% of them shuttle between regular policing and policing in schools.
And large schools as well.
Okay, and the ones in Portland do as well. One thing I'd like to add to your comments, Board Member Bondo, is that a lot of literature on SROs in schools supports the argument that the very presence of someone who spent most of their career in law enforcement leads to a cer, certain perceptual bias. It leads to looking at disorderly conduct that someone else at the school might judge as something that can be dealt with very quickly according to school policy, as something that might need to be dealt with using the entire criminal justice system. And so, ACLU affiliates around the country and national ACLU generally take the position that SROs in schools strengthen the school-to-prison pipeline and criminalize students who are economically poor or a minority. And although I don't know of studies that bear that out in Maine, there are plenty of studies that bear it out nationally. But as I understand it, the conversation here today is about body cams, but the larger conversation about SROs definitely has to be had as well.
Absolutely. And I think that the fact that we have to renew the MOU lends itself for us to have that larger conversation, at the very least for us to be transparent and, and that we can educate the community and, and our district into what the SRO's roles really are, and that they are, that we are, in fact, putting them in place as is intended and expected from the community. So, I wanted to, to add something else. So, in looking at, and taking that broad lens and looking at the big picture, because, because as we know, you know, we, as a school district, we don't operate in a vacuum, right? We are part of, of a system of education, public education in this country, and then when we involve law enforcement, then we become part of the law enforcement system in this country, right? We, we're, we're working within, within those systems. And as much as we can have really positive examples here in Portland of two outstanding police officers that are doing great work within our schools, that are supported by our staff and loved by our students, that when we look at a system, we do see, like Michael just pointed out, a lot of our communities that are overly policed, and we see a disproportionate, a disproportionate representation of black and brown people involved in the criminal justice system incarcerated. And, and I, and I worry about using two really good examples here in Portland to justify or normalize something that elsewhere is very problematic. And as we look at our Portland promise, our equity goal, we're, we're directing ourselves to root out systemic and ongoing inequities, we, I think, need to dive deep into what role we play as part of a great system. So, that's why I, I'm purposeful about these questions that I'm asking and this discussion that we're having, because I do think that we need to take a broad lens when we have these discussions. And, and I worry about the short time that I expect to be in this position, what I do in a really, you know, in a position of power to either contribute or break down systems of inequity. And so, I, I have a lot of, I'm torn in many ways, and I have a lot of thinking to do about how, how I'm going to vote for this MOU. And I'm, I'm probably gonna stop there tonight. Anyone else?
Mr. North?
I just have one last clarifying question for the Chief. As Michael mentioned about the FERPA and those videos going into that, going into that police server, police database, and you said, anybody, anybody in the department has access to those videos, or what is the, what is the, what's the confidentiality within, within the department?
Sworn personnel have access to most videos. There are certain videos, for instance, if there was a critical incident or something that we, or a internal affairs allegation or complaint that we will segregate, but other than that, sworn personnel have access to that.
And so, that, that's like, just normal police officers, sworn personnel, right?
Right. The, the, the back end of it itself, it's not something that you can go through and say, "I want to look at all juvenile cases," or "all cases." It's basically date and time. So, you would have to have somebody that would know a particular date and time as opposed to, "I'm looking for John Smith."
Yeah, of course.
That was really recorded at some point in the last year or something, so.
Of course. And, awesome, thank you. And I just want to say that I think it's kind of gone a little bit unmentioned during this discussion. The real, like, primary purpose of these officers at the schools is for safety, and I think I'm incredibly grateful to have Officer Benis at my school and incredibly grateful on behalf of Deering students to have Officer Black at their school. I think they serve a really important purpose for guaranteeing student safety, both psychologically and in reality. This past Tuesday, I don't know if all of you know that, know this, but there was an incident at Portland High School that luckily turned out to be nothing, and I was luckily not in the building for that incident. I was having my wisdom teeth removed, so I woke up and I see an email on my phone from my principal saying that there was a 911, 911 call, that there was someone in the building with a gun. And that's really, really scary, and the school went into lockdown. And my peers, what I heard from them, they were really, really scared. And primarily, I think it is so important that we have not just any security officer, a real police officer in the building to guarantee security in those situations, both psychologically and physically. And I want to thank you guys so much for what you do in that respect.
I, I really appreciate that, and I, I, that incident was handled very well, I thought, by both school staff and everything I heard, and from the police officers that responded. And you're right, I would certainly, and the kids that were there. I mean, it was, it was, it was really textbook, and fortunately, it did have a positive ending. But I think from the law enforcement perspective, from the safety perspective, I 100% concur with that because it is what safety's about. I think not having an SRO in the schools in 2019, given the state of affairs nationally, would be, from my perspective, negligent. And, and I think that the benefits that they have, the mutual benefits that I think both the students and the staff and the schools and the police department and the offices involved have is, it's been a really good partnership, so, thank you.
Ms. Moriarty?
I know, I know we need to wrap up, but I think there's two things that stick out in my mind. I really want to, I really want to emphasize the fact that you have no incidents in either, besides this one that we just talked about. But, but in terms of, the reason why I started with the why question is, I think for the community, students, and parents to realize, we're not doing this as a reactionary to something that's happened in our school, because we are coming off of, as a Deering parent, as a district representative for that school, we're coming off of a time where we're trying to make sure people know those weren't serious criminal activity things happening at Deering, and, "Oh, wow, look, now we have a officer there with a camera." Just, so, so bringing that up, I really would love to make sure that we're doing this very consciously, purposefully around making sure that the communication around why Officer Black would, if we all agreed that they would be having cameras, even a presentation by the officer to the whole student body around what his purpose is there to be, why he has this camera, just more of, again, educational reasons around why is this happening? Because I don't want them any, at any point to feel like it's a reaction to anything they've done, or that, that they could feel any less safe or less able to confide in him for any reason. I just, that's, I agree completely with my, my board members and student reps to say that perception is, you know, is everything, and if they feel like, "Wait a minute, there's a purpose around, there's a reason, something we've done potentially to cause this," that's where I think I really don't want that to happen, and I won't vote in favor of this if, if we're not including some type of well-thought-out communication that goes along with it to our students and parents. That's one thing. And then the second thing was around asking Superintendent around, I'm sure you've talked with your administrators around... with your administrators around what they, they're here.
That's why we're all here.
I know. And I really want to call out the fact, thank you for all being here tonight. And I would love to just hear maybe what your thoughts are and how you feel on the camera piece of it. Because yes, SROs personally, I think, are a valuable asset to the schools, but I just want to know the camera pieces still, I'm very conflicted. Thank you.
I'll try to get to that piece. But I did want to say and respond, Mr. Rodriguez, to the statement about the SRO is part of our admin team. I've been an administrator in public high schools for 23 years. And I was back there counting, and I think I've worked with 10 school resource officers in 23 years in three different high schools. And I think the value of a school resource officer in a school is high. Having very clear, very strong, very collaborative relationship is what makes this work so well. And that partnership is not something that I take for granted, and it's not something that I would want to be without. And so I consider our officer part of our team, and I think part of our school, part of our school community. And I think what he brings and what other officers have brought to the situation, because I have worked with Officer Black, is that it's a seamless system. There are clear lanes. There's a lane that they're in as a police officer that I'm not in. And then there's a lane that I'm in as a school administrator that they're not in. And they know that. And the partnership that we have is what makes it work so well. So that said, I mean, that's really a tribute to how hard that we work to make it work. And I think that over the years, I've really seen the relationship that officers have made with students, you know, and John'll, you know, points to that, is high. And I think that's been a priority for us. And so I think that that's also very good. To the point of body cameras, I can, I hear all, I hear both sides. And I think that's where I have to go to, trusting my school resource officer when and if it's going to be used. And that I do. And so I will leave that debate to you. I think there, I think there is value to it being used in a school system. I don't think that we would have the occasion to use it that often, but I think there is value. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Dr. Hamon?
Good evening. I understand your concerns about having an officer with a gun in the room with the students. But I'll tell you that 99% of our students feel comfortable actually having Officer Black in this school. So, yeah, I understand from the minority perspective and equity perspective that, in the bigger context, and I don't want to reduce Officer Black is good officer and the program to Officer Black, but I will tell you that the program is working, especially having the officer we have in this school. As far as the body camera is concerned, again, from the minority perspective, or there are some students actually who are more comfortable having, officer having a camera and things being recorded than otherwise. So as we can initially think about that, the privacy and confidentiality of the students, but having the camera actually is also, I could say, support for the students who might otherwise think that, or the people who may otherwise think that their rights will be violated by an officer who, you know, doesn't understand the minority perspective. So I want to tell you that we can look at this the positive way as well. So, and again, I don't want to reduce this to say Officer Black is amazing officer, and that's why we like the SRO program, but I want to, the SRO program is really very valuable in this school.
Thank you. So, oh.
Say one more thing.
Of course, Mr. Pierce.
Hi, I'm Derek, Principal, Casco Bay High School. And just representing this bill in PAS, we don't have an SRO. We really like one, for all the reasons that have come up today. And I won't add more to the body camera debate, but just for all the reasons that have been spoken about, we have the same number of kids when you combine Casco Bay and PAS, the other two high schools. And we would love to benefit from this resource as well. Thanks.
Ms. Finkdo?
Mr. Pierce, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Can you talk more about why you would like an SRO here at Casco Bay?
Well, given the hour.
Is that, okay.
I would just say that I would echo, you know, the reasons that my colleagues have spoken highly about the value of that position. And I think what it does for bringing kids into healthier relationships with their community police officers, I think is super important and valuable, beyond what's been said tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Finkdo. Mr. Balmis?
Question for the police chief. Sir, if we sent you a MOU that required the RSOs to record in an overt fashion, would that be an issue for you?
I would talk about it with command staff to see why they had opted at this point to go covert. I think that was more aimed towards nighttime, on-the-street scenarios, but off the, my gut reaction is no, that it would be, it is something that devices do, and I wouldn't be opposed to that.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Atkinson?
Thank you, Chair. It's been interesting listening to the conversation, and I feel I have a very different perspective on this whole issue from a lot of the voices that have been shared and a lot of the people in this room who I have an immense amount of respect for. It's a different position for me. I feel like I'm often on board and going along with the energy of the board. But, you know, I've been thinking about this a lot. And I think that, I'm really glad that the body camera issue is in here, because I think it really helped me to crystallize my thinking on this in a larger context. I take a moment and I reflect on why, why we have these body cameras, why we suddenly have an expectation as a community that police officers record their interactions with people, and the interactions that led to that expectation, both in the larger sense nationally and even here in Portland. And the incident where a young man was killed by a Portland police officer, that really triggered this, this adoption in the pilot program that began last year. And when I reflect on those things, when I, when I think about that, and personally, I have to take, I don't have occasion to call the police, but I can tell you that if I were in a situation where I felt like I had to call the police to deal with an issue, and the issue involved a young person of color, person of color in general, I would take a couple of second guesses on myself and make sure that I really felt like that was my only option. And to have a consistent daily presence of law enforcement in our schools feels to me like I'm calling the police, asking the police to be there in our schools with our students every, every day. And I wonder what message that sends to our community about our students. You know, there was some press coverage this summer about safety and discipline issues at Deering High School. And you can't help but, but notice that, you know, as Deering has gotten more diverse, has gotten to a point where the student population looks quite different to what it looked like 20 or 30 years ago, we speak differently about discipline. I think that, I think that the Portland Police Department has made a lot of good strides. They're very well-meaning, to pick up some words that were used earlier on, as is our school district. But we have work to do on addressing our implicit biases and on tackling the systemic and institutional racism that exists in our society and in our institutions. And these are two of our institutions that sadly, you know, combined to form that school-to-prison pipeline. And so I am, I just, I want to make it clear that I'm not going to be supporting this regardless of what way the body cameras go. I don't think that, I think we have other options to keep our schools safe that don't include armed law enforcement as a daily presence. Thank you.
I want to help us kind of wrap up a little bit. It is getting late, and I think we've had a really good discussion. And I think we have a few weeks before, on November 12, a meeting where we'll have this up for a vote. So I want to encourage board members to email any further questions or anything else you need clarified. But I'd be, I think I would not be very happy with myself if I not add one last comment to add context into what Mr. Atkinson's just said. And I hate to add disclaimers before I say anything, but I want to again remind all three of the administrators that we have here that I have immense respect for the work that you do. And you know that I'm a partner in this work of yours. And I hope in the three years that I've been here that I've been really clear about my willingness to be a strong supportive partner of your work. What I want to add as context is that we have data of out-of-school suspensions in our high schools. And we do see a disproportionate representation of our students of color who make up the suspension rates as it's related to the, what they, who they are in the enrollment of the schools. And a lot of that is guided by referrals, which could be swayed by these biases. And when I see language in an MOU of what subjective reasoning we're going to use to activate that camera, and I see the school personnel being part of it, I think that we have, as Mr. Atkinson just said, we have some equity issues to address that I think, in my opinion, need to be corrected before we add the layer of armed police officers in our school campuses. Because we raise the stakes quite a bit when we add that layer. That's what I want to say to close us up with. Mr. Otana, if you want to help us finish up?
As I said in the, you know, in my introduction, I think one of the purposes of this conversation was to have the conversation that we had today, which is to, you know, there are members of this board who were not here when this MOU was originally crafted. And I think it's an important conversation. So again, I would just reiterate what Chair Rodriguez said, and, you know, between now and the 12th, any questions, comments, thoughts, or ideas that you have, please let us know. You know what the S, what the MOU is. You know what the MOU is proposing to do. And so, you know, I certainly hope that you will, you know, have robust conversations with me, with staff, you know, in the schools, with, you know, whoever helps to inform your perspective on it, because we are bringing this for, you know, for a vote in two weeks.
Yep. And I do have that report of the, the Color Institute research. As a matter of fact, one of the researchers is here with us today, Daniel Lane. So I'm more than happy to share that with the board. And again, I'm looking forward to us continuing this conversation leading up to November 12, 10:16 PM. I like to remind us all the time.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you very much.